It doesn't go away, it's right away.
Good evening and welcome to the January 3rd, 2023 City Council Meeting. It will now come to order. We will have the invocation given by Pastor Bill Fish of Damascus Friends Salem Campus, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, we are grateful for this opportunity to be here tonight and to gather for this meeting. God, we're grateful for your many blessings that we experience on a daily basis, and we're thankful for your love and for your goodness. Thank you, God, that you care about each person in this room and about our daily lives and each and every detail, and God, you know them, and we're grateful for that. And I just pray, as we begin this new year, that you would just lead and guide and direct this council in each and every department, position that is represented here tonight. God, I just pray for your wisdom, your guidance, your leading in the decisions that will be made. And God, I pray for this year that you would bring this community closer together. God, I pray that you would unite this community together, it would prosper this year, and just thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Salem. And God, we just pray for your wisdom, your guidance, your leading throughout the night. Thank you for each person in this room, and thank you that you love and care for each and everyone. And we give you all the thanks and praise tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would anyone like to make a motion for the Clerk Pro Tem? Mr. Zellers?
Actually, I don't think we need to take the roll call first.
Well, it says here Clerk.
Yeah, and then the Clerk does roll.
Okay, and Jordan needs to hug him a second.
You're gonna appoint this time, but when it comes to the election of the permanent present pro tem, that'll be a motion.
Gotcha.
I apologize.
Okay, sorry, bear with us. I wish to appoint Mr. Faber as the Clerk Pro Tem.
Roll call now?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
I guess, sorry, present.
Here.
Mr. Knoll?
Present.
Mr. Pleggie?
Here.
Mr. Stockman?
Here.
Mr. Zellers?
Here.
And Mr. Faber is here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anyone like to make a motion for the adoption of council roles? Mr. Stockman, is there a second? Mr. Newman? Do we have to take a roll? Mr. Faber?
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yeah.
And Mr. Faber votes yes as well.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to appoint Debbie Booker as the Clerk.
Council, it would actually take one of the council members to nominate in a second.
Mr. Zellers?
I'm gonna nominate Debbie Booker.
Is there a second? Mr. Pleggie? Mr. Faber, would you please take roll?
Sure. Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
And Mr. Faber votes yes as well.
Yes.
So would you raise your right hand and take the oath, repeat after me. I, Debbie Booker, do hereby swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the laws of the State of Ohio, and the ordinances of the City of Salem, Ohio. I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge and perform my duties as Council Clerk of the City of Salem according to the best of my ability and understanding.
Welcome back, Debbie.
Would a member of council like to make a nomination for President Pro Tem? Mr. Newman?
I'd like to nominate Andrew Knoll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gano? Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll is now President Pro Tem. Moving on to the approval of council journals. Is there a motion for that?
That would be the minutes, correct?
No.
Are you talking about all of them? Yeah, you would have to have a motion.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the council journal? Mr. Stockman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the council journal.
Is there a second? Mr. Gano? Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Ask a question. Is that the same as the minutes? What is the council journal?
I think the council journal will be the methodology in which Mrs. the Clerk would keep the minutes of council.
Okay.
Which I don't know if that's specified in the rules, but whatever she's been doing or using, I think is what we consider the journal.
Okay.
We talked years ago about maybe addressing it specifically in the rules, and I'm quickly going back through, I don't think we ever said it, but I believe that that's what it would be in this journal.
Okay. All right, so, yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
The council journal is approved. Moving on to council committee and liaison appointments.
I guess in years past, it's been all announced.
Okay, that's fine. For the, everyone has received a copy of this, correct? Standing committees? Great. For Finance Committee, Andrew Knoll is chairman. Steve Faber, Jake Gano, with Jeff Stockman, excuse me, serving as the alternate member. For the Residential Committee, Dennis Pleggie is the chairman. Steve Faber, Ron Zellers, with Andrew Knoll as the alternate member. Roles and ordinances committee, Jeff Stockman is the chairman. Andrew Knoll, Dennis Pleggie, and Ron Zellers as the alternate member. Economic Development, Jake Gano is the chairman. Andrew Knoll, Evan Newman, and Dennis Pleggie as the alternate member. Public Services Committee, Ron Zellers is the chairman. Dennis Pleggie, Evan Newman, and Steve Faber as the alternate member. The Downtown Committee, Evan Newman is the chairman. Jake Gano, Jeff Stockman, and Ron Zellers as the alternate member. Safety Committee, Steve Faber is the chairman. Ron Zellers, Jeff Stockman, and Jake Gano as the alternate member. Committee of the Whole, Andrew Knoll was elected the President Pro Tem, and Clerk Pro Tem is Steve Faber. We do not have any petitions for this evening. Moving on to the receiving of visitors. Cheryl Toss, would you like to speak?
I would ask that when anyone speaks tonight, just to make sure you're close to the microphone. We've been having some issues with it picking up our guests. I'm sorry, yeah.
Good evening, council. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
I'm here to see the mayor Cindy. I'm Cheryl Toss. I'm the lady that called you to welcome you to the city as the first time female mayor. Pardon me. We chit-chatted a little while. And I said that I had resided on Highland, corner Quaker Lane, Highland, Utes residents. And then I designed the gardens at Lonely Pond, and I was Civic Chairman for Salem Garden Club. Civic, which is beautification of Salem. And we planted up downtown Central Park, Wasers. And you invited me to be on the committee for the Design Committee. And I said, well, just call me back, leave a message, because I didn't have a date or a time for that. So you called me back, and then I called you and a day or two later. And you said that it would be up to Tricia and David, and I didn't get a clarification on that issue or the time or the date. So that's why I came. And I didn't know if you knew that I was on the Board of Directors of River Silliship Gardens. That was raising funds for the gardens and having a couple of style shows and taking a tour bus, selling tickets, and Ed DeBartlo graciously opened up his home to sell tickets, raised a lot of funds for that. And I've served Salem since 1960, both hospitals. And I was born here, raised here, graduated here, served my community. And I was so looking forward to helping and sitting on the committee. So I didn't know who David, you didn't mention who David or Tricia was, that it was up to them. So I'm asking you for information.
Okay, you know, you and I did speak about this after the fact, after the committee was set.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, so we did speak about this after the committee was set. I did submit your name as one of the names, but we weren't able to contact you in time for meetings. So they did put someone else in that place. But I really do appreciate your willingness to serve and your enthusiasm for the project and our city.
Okay, well, what do you mean you couldn't contact me when I have a recording? And you left a message to call you back, which I did.
And they tried to, I did try to contact you another time about an email address, because that's how they were sending the invitations, but we did not get one.
I do not have an email. You had to contact me by phone, like I said to you when we spoke. Just call me back and let me know date, time, and where the first meeting would be, and I would be there.
Yeah, also, I didn't want to continue to call you and call you because you had told me you had limited times that you were available because of your schedule.
No, I didn't ever say I wasn't available. I said that I wanted to get it on my schedule so that it would be on my schedule. That's why I needed a date and time. I didn't know your first meeting. I had designed a space for there, a gazebo, entranceway, everything for that area. I see Bob Mastroni's, Mastriana, is he here? This evening? No? It's almost the same gazebo that we had at the River Silliship Gardens. It's lovely design. I was quite excited about it. And as I said, I worked on the design. Matter of fact, I think I gave John Berlin and Debbie some copies of some different informations at one time on that.
And I did take that folder with us to the committee.
But I had only received one phone call from you on my recorder, so as I said, I was just very disappointed that I didn't get to serve my community, which I've served since the 60s, starting at both the hospitals. And I just wanted to offer again my service.
So they have set the Phase 1, and it is getting prepared to go out to bids. But I will forward your desire to assist on that program to the committee for if they meet for future phases?
Okay, that would be lovely. I have an entranceway designed in Memorial.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Nice meeting you. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Our next visitor for tonight is Kevin Butner, and he is with TAP and SRTS Funding.
Good evening, council. It's been a long time since I've been up here. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that we were, we as the Ohio Mediation Government Association, we are working with the city to construct your Transportation Alternatives Program funding application. This is to finish Phase 2 of the downtown sidewalk project. First phase has been constructed, the second phase is what we're asking ODOT for some funding for. And that is due at the end of this month. A sister program to that is the Safe Routes to School, which we plan to, we're still scoping out that project, but it's going to be centered around the junior and senior high school. So we'll be building some of those improvements from the downtown project north towards the school building up there. And lastly, the, on your, on your agenda for later this evening is a resolution to go after ODOT's oil and shale funding program as well. So if you do have any questions about that one, we'll be here for a little bit before we head back to our office. But when we get to that matter of business, if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the report of city officials, Mayor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to get rid of one piece of business before I move on to the second, and that is that we need to reappoint Kyle Kramer to the Utilities Commission. That is a mayor appointment with confirmation by council. So I would need to have a motion and a vote on that.
Mr. Newman?
I'd like to motion to reappoint Kyle Kramer to the Utilities Commission.
Is there a second? Mr. Faber?
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer is appointed to the Utilities Commission.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next, I'm going to read this statement. "On Friday, I received a call from Chief Panzot. He informed me of a situation of grave concern regarding his police force morale. He stated that two of his police officers came to him after being approached by Councilman Pleggie. Lieutenant Casto states, and I confirmed with him this statement and obtained his consent to use his name, that Councilman Pleggie told him that the mayor is going to lay off five police officers. Lieutenant Casto was on duty at the time. Another officer also reported to the chief that Councilman Pleggie had led him to believe something similar while at Jalisco's. If someone who is viewed as a credible person due to their position as a councilman makes statements like this, they cultivate fear, destroy morale, jeopardize the department's ability to attract new employees, and could derail upcoming contracts. I want to be clear, I did not ever say that I was considering layoffs. I will not lay off police officers. If anyone has told any disturbing information about my plans as mayor, please contact me directly. I would be glad to speak with you. This needs to stop for the welfare of our city." Thank you.
Conclusion. The Law Director, Attorney Zellers?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, obviously, we have an ordinance back before council concerning the Hickey annexation. Just want to let everybody know that, you know, whatever notice requirements weren't met with the last one is all this is about. It's just fixing that. The city was notified last week by the annexation agent that it was filed after having reviewed the law associated with Type 2 annexations. Our, our time starts to tick from the notice itself, not from the commissioner's action. That's why this thing's before you tonight, and we have 20 days to do it. And if we wait until the 17th meeting, actually, that'll be the 21st day. So we want to get this thing taken care of tonight and hopefully get that thing back on track. A lot of people have put a lot of effort into that, and to have it sort of sidetracked there for a moment was a little bit disconcerting to some, but this is the start of the fix of it. So just want to make sure everybody understood that, and that's all I have. And you have any answer any questions?
Mr. Knoll?
I'm not sure if you're the one to ask, Brooke, or not, and this is just a minute point, but you know, the books we get with the codified ordinance and we get the inserts put in every year. Is there anything legal that says we have to get paper copies? Or if we choose as a council, just to get it electronically, would that satisfy that requirement?
I believe it would. Actually, jurisdictionally, that has, there's, there's a couple of answers to that. I'm not sure about here in our, in our particular area that we reside in the state, what the, what the finding is on that. The concern is access. There are people that don't have access to a smartphone or a computer, and therefore, they would need to actually come and look at a paper copy. So I think it'd probably be prudent to keep at least one paper copy somewhere. I was told, and we are in the process of revamping our, our situation with our codifier at this point, and I can find this out for sure, but apparently, there isn't a difference in price between getting some paper and some online.
There is or is not?
It's not.
Oh, okay.
So if that's the case, then certainly, we should just be getting some paper copies. If there is an additional cost to that, then maybe we should revisit that. If you recall, for years, we codified once a year. Mayor Berlin thought maybe we should move that to quarterly, which we did for the last couple of years. Unfortunately, despite the fact that we didn't think it was going to increase the cost, and Mrs. Brothers isn't here, it increased it substantially. So we think we're going to look back to just doing it twice a year to cut back on those costs. And that should be sufficient for the type of stuff that we're, that we're codifying. But throughout those discussions, I'll be happy to ask that question again and let you know.
Yeah, I just thought maybe it was a cost saves, and me personally, I just go to my laptop and my phone, and I never use my book.
AmLegal. I just jump on AmLegal on my phone or my computer, and I try to tell everybody that. Because I get those, you know, someone just called me the other day, how many ponies can they have in the city? Don't laugh, they might have been related to somebody here, but.
I was the one who called, actually.
But I try to explain to people, we're online. If you look under AmLegal, you know, you go to Ohio and the City of Salem, all of our stuff's there. And there's a, there's a search line, it's wonderful, it's very easy to look at.
What was the name of that?
AmLegal. I think it stands for American Legal, A-M-E-G-A-L.
Orga.com?
There, com, I think.
It's on our website, too.
Yeah, it is. There's a link from our city website also. They codify for many, many cities and villages in the cities, in the state of Ohio and Pennsylvania. It looks like maybe New York as well. So you can find just about anything, and it's a great, as council people, it's a great resource. If you're thinking about proposing an ordinance that we don't have, it's a great way to look at what some other cities and towns have done in that regard as well. So it's a good resource for the citizens and for everybody sitting up here.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any questions for Attorney Zellers? Moving on to Safety and Services, Mr. Capazello.
Madam President, I do not have to report this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Weingart.
Madam Chair, members of council, audible there. I have two ordinances before you this evening, and I think everybody's had contact with them by now. The two ordinances are common procedure for the Utilities Department. The one is to allow me to advertise for bids for chemicals for the water and wastewater department. That usually is, contracts usually run from May 15th, this year, 2023, to May 14th on, or 15th on the 24. So I know, I think you've had them before you, if there's any questions on those. There being no questions right now. Anyway, I also have passed out a copy of our sludge ordinance removal from our water treatment plant and dewatering system. And that is a, or that is a contract that is usually a three-year contract. And it's, at the end of two years, the Utilities Commission can opt out of it because we are in a construction project. We don't know what the cost of that is to be bid, cost at this time. The bids will be open on the 27th of January. The engineer's estimate is 14 million 700, and then there's plus the engineering. And so far, we've paid the engineering firm over about a million two. So this is not readable material for everyday reading, but it's there for you in case you have some questions on it. And the cost of this project to remove sludge from the wastewater plant, it runs about $325,000 a year. This year, we will be bringing on the Water Department, wastewater, or the waste that is removed from the waters during the treatment process will be brought on. We don't have a really good handle on what that's going to cost, but it requires a drying of the slud, the sludges that we remove from both plants and just haul to either a farm site because it is beneficial use sludges. And so, or if not, if we cannot get on the agricultural lands, then we haul it away to an authorized disposal area. And so if there's any questions on that, I, I know that some of you have received this several weeks ago. And if there's any questions, if you want to talk about it, I'll be here to talk about it. So the other item that has come up is the, since there's several new council people on the Salem City Council, I have sent out the rate structure for both water and wastewater to all of you. If you haven't opened up your computers today, you'll, you'll see it. And it's ordinances that was passed by the Salem City Council. One was in '21 and the other's in '22 for the, for those years. So I recommend that those two ordinances which you have is passed this evening for emergency with emergency clause so that I can move forward on that. So that is my report for this evening.
I just have a question about the sludge removal, if that's okay? You mentioned that it was beneficial to agricultural.
Yes.
Do we, I'm assuming there's not a cost for disposing it there, but there would be for having it hauled away to like a dump site or something. Is that correct?
There's, the cost is distributed by the tonnage that we, that is removed. Well, what we do is go out for bids, and there's probably only four to six companies that really remove these sludges because the hauler, the distributors, they take the sludge, take the water out of the sludge, and then they take it to either the beneficial use site or the disposable area. So those costs are all bid into the contract. I don't have those costs immediately with, but the total cost was, you can look at 350,000 per year. Be prepared for the shock that's coming along for this because the contract that we're losing now, which is up in February, is a three-year contract, so we've seen, have seen quite a hefty inflationary price increase. So that 350, or three and a quarter, 325,000 is probably going to be much higher this year. And the one thing to remember with the disposal for beneficial use, that hauler is required to have lands available for that company to dispose. And he has, he, she, has to go in and if he, if you say you have a farm that you want to, that use the sludges off, whether they're either lime or the organics from the wastewater plant, he has to go in ahead of time. And every site, every field that he's going to use for the beneficial use, they have to test the soils. They're looking for a number of items in that testing. And then he applies it, distributes it over the farmlands. And then he has to go back at a regular period and test that soil. So, and then he has to report all this to the Ohio EPA. So it's highly regulated, but it is, especially the waste of the wastewater treatment plant is beneficial for the nitrogen and phosphorus, which we all want to take it out of the water streams, but for growing food, that's one of the main items and the growth factor of plant life. So in fact, it's almost in demand today because the, since the inflation started, fertilizer has gone through the roof on price. So that may be a benefit to us. In the new plant now, we're looking at a dryer, if we can afford it, when that, when the bids come in. We don't know because the drying system is going to run between $2 to $3 million for just the one piece of equipment. So, but that will give us a Class A sludge out of the wastewater plant that can be used for gardens. Anybody can use it for their lawns, whatever. But right now, we're able to produce a Class B, which is still beneficial, but it goes through different restrictions.
Thank you. Mr. Newman.
Thanks, Mr. Weingart. As you can imagine, with utility bills going out recently and the little memo at the bottom saying that the raise in rates are coming, I'm sure, like all of my fellow council people, we've received a number of questions and concerns. And for someone who's new to council and, you know, understanding some of the reasons for the rate increases, just curious if that had to do with the water, you know, the water treatment plant rebuilding, as well as kind of some of the EPA, you know, the EPA standards that we're now, you know, bound by. Just trying to make sure I understand so that then we can pass that along to our constituents.
Ms. Chairman Evan, we have, that's one reason why I pointed, why I sent out these rates. Because you are going to hear a lot of calls. We are not, we thought we'd have much more call with this last rate increase than what we have had. Everybody knows that our rates, the last rate increase in wastewater was in 1995. And so it just, about two years ago, we did raise the rates. But we still remain a little bit lower than some of the communities, but it's moving and it's moving up. But one of the trouble with our rate increase, it was prepared when we were getting a 2% to 3% inflationary factor. Now, in the coming year, well, last month, it was 7.1% for the inflationary rate, as we probably have all read that. And it seems to have leveled out a little bit, but I think we're probably going to see an average for next year, at least 6%. And that, our rate increase for the future, when the payments are being made, because we're getting a D for loan for the wastewater, we do have that in our pocket. But we don't know the rate of interest that's going to be on that. But I think the rate will probably be pretty standard for the next, I don't like this type of facts, but probably five to 10 years, these rates that we're presently going to, the public's going to have to meet, is pretty stable for the next 10, eight to 10 years, maybe even. And one thing about the wastewater loan, it is not repay, we don't start paying on it until a construction project is completed. And the construction, the Phase Three of the wastewater plant is, construction is supposed to be over by April, I guess it is, of '25. So our payments won't start. So we ought to be able to build a little bit of a cash reserve during that period of time because the rates that we're seeing right now is governed by the cost of repayment of that debt. I don't know if I confused or...
I appreciate the elaboration, and I'll look for that email.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Knoll.
You spoke at the beginning with, I think it's regarding the ordinance, speaking to the chemicals and supplies that you had sent out in email regarding information with that. Is that correct?
I think, well, it came out of the Law Director's office for the ordinance itself.
I thought you said you sent out a separate.
Oh, that was, I sent out for the rate increase.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yes. One thing about, I get to talking here, now's my chance, but I wanted, last year, we took a bid for chlorine, $550 a ton. And of course, we all know what the force majeure means, that a company can raise, if he's raised, gets a raise, then he can raise it to the customer, that's a legal term. Today's rates have been between 19, we had to limit, we could not use our bid prices at 520 because of that force majeure. But it went from, right now, it's about between 1,900 and 2,000 a ton for chlorine. And chlorine is something we cannot eliminate from our budgets. So it's, that's what we're all faced with, of course, in every, all of our lives, so maybe don't clear up. No more.
I think you've had enough of the floor for tonight, now I'm getting, thank you.
Thank you.
The report that I can never forget, Mr. Franks, he's the Parks Director.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no official report this evening, but I would like to take this opportunity to offer my condolences and deep sympathies to Dave Adams' family. Dave was a, well, he passed this past weekend, and he had been a city employee for the City of Salem for the last 34 years, 32 of them at the Parks Department. He was a good man, a good friend, and an extremely hard and dedicated worker, and we will miss him.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Mrs. Bricker does not have a report for this evening. Moving on to the report of standing committees, Finance Committee, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met, as a result, I have no report.
Thank you. Public Services Committee, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met.
Thank you. Residential Committee, Mr. Pluggie.
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met, I have no report.
Thank you. Downtown Committee, Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met, therefore I have no report.
Rules and ordinances, Mr. Stockman.
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met, but we do plan on meeting in the future, and I will have a report for you and a time and date.
Okay, leave us hanging.
Yes.
Safety Committee, Mr. Faber.
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met, I have no report.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Gano.
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has also not met, and I have no report, but I would like to, the ordinance I'm supposed to be introducing tonight, I actually cannot introduce it, it has to be bumped to a later date because the commissioners have, what? Oh, disregard.
Hi, Gary.
Totally joking. Yeah.
That's the one I was talking about. It's actually tied to the notice that we received from the petitioner, not from the...
Oh, I thought we had, okay, my mistake, all right.
That's the annexation ordinance.
Okay. Well, in that case, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gano. And Committee of the Whole, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you. My committee has not met, but we will be meeting January 17th at 6 o'clock prior to the regular council meeting to further discuss the donation we've received from the county commissioners for the Lincoln statue.
You said at 6:00?
6:00 PM.
Thank you. Introduction of ordinances and resolutions, Mr. Zellers. Tonight, you will be introducing Ordinance 1, 2, Resolution 3, and Resolution 4.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask council for a motion to suspend council rules so that ordinance number one can be introduced this evening.
Mr. Newman. Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Council rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for a motion to suspend statutory rules so ordinance number one may have all three readings this evening.
Mr. Knoll. Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that clerk read ordinance number one by title only, so with the emergency clause for passage this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Ordinance 1 by title only?
Being an ordinance authorizing the Salem Utilities Superintendent to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the purchase of water and wastewater chemicals and miscellaneous items used by the Salem Utilities Department, beginning March 15th, 2023, through March 14th, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Madam Clerk, please call roll. Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Ordinance 1 has passed, moving on to Ordinance 2, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for a motion to suspend council rules so that ordinance number 2 may be introduced this evening.
Is there a second? Mr. Faber. Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Council rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that council suspend statutory rules so that ordinance number 2 may have all three readings this evening.
Is there a second? Mr. Newman. Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that Madam Clerk read ordinance number 2 by title only with the emergency clause for passage this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Ordinance 2 by title only?
Being an ordinance authorizing the Salem Utilities Commission of the City of Salem to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the removal of liquid or caked water and wastewater treatment, solid waste, dewatering of the disposal of liquid or dewatered solid waste, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a discussion for this one? I know that Mr. Weingart was pretty thorough with it, so, no? Okay, good. Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Ordinance 2 has passed, moving on to Resolution 3, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask council for a motion to suspend council rules so that Resolution number 3 may be introduced this evening.
Is there a second? Mr. Faber. Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Council rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for a motion to suspend statutory rules so that Resolution number 3 may have all three readings this evening.
I'm not seconding it, I have a question with regards to this one. So where's the funding coming from this, for this project? The way I read it, roughly $328,000 is going to be the cost of the city less federal grants. Do we know what that is, and so do we front all that money and then at some point get reimbursed? And secondly, is that money budgeted for, and where's it coming from?
Go ahead.
That money is budgeted. I think that project is well over a million dollars. This was a part of a grant three or four years ago that we applied for and have received authorization for the grant. So this has been in the process a long time, but it is definitely, our portion of it is in the budget and will be coming out of our capital fund and also the quarter percent.
Okay, I just want to make sure before I vote it on.
Ask anytime.
Yep, thank you. Sorry.
Is there a second for statutory? Mr. Faber. Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask Madam Clerk read Resolution number 3 by title only with the emergency clause for passage this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Resolution 3?
Being a resolution authorizing the Ohio Department of Transportation to develop and construct pavement rehabilitation on State Route 344 Franklin Avenue in the City of Salem from South Lincoln Avenue to the southeast City Corporation limit, and authorizing the mayor to enter into any contracts to comply with project's requirements and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion regarding Resolution 3? Mr. Pluggie.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Zellers.
Yes.
Mr. Gano.
Yes.
Mr. Knoll.
Yes.
Mr. Stockman.
Yes.
Resolution 3 has passed, moving on to Resolution 4, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that council rules be suspended so that... so that resolution number four may be introduced this evening.
Is there a second? Mr. Newman?
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Council rules are suspended. Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that statutory rules be suspended this evening so that order resolution number four may have all three readings.
Is there a second? Mr. Faber?
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that Madam Clerk read resolution number four by title only with the emergency clause for passage this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read resolution four by title only?
Being a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Salem, Ohio, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Local Roads, Oil and Shale Program, and to execute contracts as required, and declaring an emergency.
Do we have any discussion regarding resolution four? Mr. Newman?
I was just curious if maybe the folks from Omega could elaborate on what the oil shale program is and what the funds can be used towards.
Madam President, council... The ODOT oil shale is money that's derived from the permitting of the horizontal oil and gas wells that have been drilled. There's none in the city, but there are some to the east and southeast of the city. And we think that there is cause for some of the traffic that went to originally drill those and then maintain those wells would have come from the north or at least come through town at some point. So this can be used on any local road, so no state highways, but any road within your jurisdiction that we reasonably believe the traffic would have gone down. Generally, these are those brine trucks, a little bit bigger construction equipments that they really would use to abuse your roads. And it's any road that doesn't have a road user maintenance agreement, which is shortened to a RUMA. Most municipalities don't have RUMAs. They're more common out in the townships. So we talked to the service director, and we think that there's reason to believe that for some of those ones, even though the drilling's been done and they're producing that in the past, when they were drilled within the past, I'd say a little shorter than a decade, that they did come through town, they did put some wear and tear. And so this is the state's way of saying, we needed the oil and gas. We wanted to provide that, but we're taking some of those proceeds that we received and fixing the damage that we caused to get it.
So this is just an application, correct? There's no guarantee that we're getting this funding?
It is an application. It's up to five hundred thousand. There is no local match for this. It's focused really on the construction, the pavement rehabilitation. And it's a very small... You're not competing statewide. I believe there's only... I think ten counties, most of which are in our region to the, you know, along the Ohio River. You're the furthest north, and then there's a couple south of seventy. But this is the third or fourth iteration of this program, and a lot of the major ones have already been done. So we think that Salem is going to be a lot more competitive in this round than maybe the ones in Jefferson or Harrison County. It's all more traffic.
Any other questions for Kevin while he's up here?
Thanks, Kevin.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Resolution four has passed. Moving on to the introduction of ordinance five, Mr. Stockman.
Madam President, I move that council suspend council rules so that ordinance number five can be considered tonight.
Is there a second? Mr. Faber?
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Statu... I'm sorry. Council rules are suspended. Mr. Stockman.
Madam President, I ask council to suspend statutory rules so that ordinance number five can be read for its first, second, and third reading tonight.
Is there a second? Mr. Newman?
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Stockman. You kind of combined with the...
Yes.
I move that Madam Clerk read the ordinance number five by title only with the emergency clause for its first, second, and third reading.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance five by title only?
Being an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of several ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the Codified Ordinances of Salem, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Discussion regarding ordinance five. Mr. Stockman?
I just want to point out that this is what Mr. Zellers was speaking... Attorney Zellers was speaking of prior to this, how our laws change with the state laws. Just to get... We hire a company to do it. It's nothing unusual. Just for anyone that wants to know.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Ordinance five has passed. Moving on to the introduction of ordinance six, Mr. Gano.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I start asking to suspend things, Attorney Zellers, we need to suspend the council rules on this. I know we've... I can't remember if we did it. Because it technically came out of committee.
It did, didn't it?
I'm looking at my notes from the seventeenth.
Yeah, and it's been here...
Yeah. Should I do it just to...
How about out of safety?
Okay, out of safety.
Abundance of caution, just two K's.
Perfect, all right. In that case, Madam President, I move that council suspend council rules so that ordinance two-three-zero-one-zero-three dash oh-six can be considered tonight.
Is there a second? Mr. Faber?
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Council rules are suspended. Mr. Faber... I'm sorry, Mr. Gano.
He's not happy about that one. All right, thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend statutory rules so that ordinance two-three-zero-one-zero-three dash zero-six can have all three readings tonight.
Is there a second? Mr. Newman?
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Gano.
All right, thank you, Madam President. I move that clerk read ordinance two-three-zero-one-zero-three dash zero-six by title only for its first, second, and third reading with the emergency clause for passage this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance six by title only?
Being an ordinance consenting to annexation and designating the services the City of Salem will provide to the twenty-nine-point-five-four-four acre territory proposed for annexation from Perry Township, Columbia County, to the City of Salem, and establishing the buffer requirements the City will enforce as provided by the Ohio Revised Code, section seven oh nine point zero-two-three, and declaring an emergency.
Discussion on ordinance six.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggie?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll? Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
I guess I guess.
Sorry.
I think I might have been skipped over, actually, now that...
Did you skip Mr. Newman by chance?
Oh, maybe I did. Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Ordinance six has passed. Pleasure of council, Mr. Knoll?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Gano?
Nothing. Give me thanks.
Mr. Newman?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Faber?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Zellers?
I have nothing either.
Mr. Pleggie?
First go out to the family of Dave Adams.
And Mr. Stockman?
I have nothing tonight. I'm just excited to know what else did either. Not the pleasure of council.
Well, thank you all. The meeting is adjourned.
Did you, uh... Sir, do you have a gavel?
No.
I have one. She didn't bring it.
Can we fabricate a gavel for you?
She has one.
Okay.
She just... I don't have to fabricate it.
Well, just start bringing it. I mean... You gotta get like a... See, that's... We need that like from, uh, the opera, you know? Six, 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 you know?
Yeah, I don't think I need to be shoving six, six, six.
That's something... I wasn't saying it from the...